Present.
Councilmember Oliver.
Present.
Councilmember Fun.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pappen.
Here.
Mayor Oliva.
Here.
All members of the City Council are present.
So I see here. For Mayor, for Mayor Fogarty, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Janet, are you there?
Yes, if you'd all please stand to join me in this salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. So tonight, are we on the second day of spring? It feels like the first day of summer, but welcome everybody to our Millbrae City Council meeting for March 22, 2022. We have a couple of ceremonial presentations tonight, and I would like to start with the proclamation proclaiming March 25, 2022 as Greek Independence Day, and no other than our council member Gina Pappen to present that, please.
City of Millbrae proclamation. Greek Independence Day is celebrated annually on March 25 to honor the Greek Revolution of 1821. On March 25, 1821, the people of Greece declared their independence and liberty from the Ottoman Empire, which had occupied Greece for nearly 400 years. And on that day, Bishop Eurachimos of Patras raised the Greek flag at the monastery of Hagia La Varis, inciting the Peloponnese to rise against their oppressors. And after many years of war, where the allied support of Great Britain, France, and Russia, the people of Greece won their independence from the Ottoman Empire on September 14, 1829. Greece, the birthplace of democracy, was free again. And Greek Independence Day is celebrated with patriotic speeches, parades, and military demonstrations. Across Greece, there are school-organized parades in which children march with the Greek flag while dressed in traditional costumes. And whereas the city of Millbrae recognizes Greek Independence Day and honors the heritage of more than 3 million Americans of Greek descent, now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do proclaim March 25, 22, 2022 as Greek Independence Day, and I would like to thank the city of Millbrae for recognizing Greek Independence Day, for my grandparents who came to this country way back when not speaking any English, working in factories for 40 years or dishwashers, and my own father who didn't speak English when he started school. So as the second generation, I'm very proud that we celebrate this day and recognize the immigrants. So as the Hamilton play goes, the immigrants get the job done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well said. Next up, we have a proclamation complaint proclaiming March 31, 2022 as Caesar Chavez Days. And I've asked Gina Miranda, one of our constituents from Millbrae, to please, would you read this proclamation, Gina?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Great. The first one will be Cesar Chavez. Whereas Cesar Chavez was born on March 31, 1927, in Yuma, Arizona, on a small farm that his grandfather homesteaded in the 1880s. And whereas during the Great Depression, his family lost their home and livelihood. Chavez left school in the seventh grade to work alongside his family in the fields of California, where he experienced dismal working conditions, racism, abuse, exploitation. And whereas in 1962, Cesar Chavez founded the National Farm Workers Association, later to become the United Farm Workers. On top of fighting for the protection and human rights of farmworkers, the union sought recognition of the importance and dignity of all farmworkers. And whereas Chavez led a historic march of farmworkers from Delano, California, to Sacramento in 1965, and conducted several hunger strikes to reaffirm his lifelong commitment to nonviolent resistance, Cesar Chavez's heroic leadership also protected farmworkers and their children from exposure to harmful pesticides. And whereas on August 8, 1994, Cesar Chavez received a posthumous Presidential Medal of Freedom, the highest civilian honor in the United States, becoming only the second Mexican-American to receive the honor. And whereas each year on March 31, we celebrate the birth and legacy of one of America's greatest champions for social justice and equality. On March 28, 2014, President Barack Obama declared Cesar Chavez Day a national holiday. Now therefore, we, the members of Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim March 31, 2022 as Cesar Chavez Day. And Annabelle is going to unmute herself.
Annabelle Amador.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I take great honor and pride accepting this on behalf of all the Latinos in Millbrae. There, the 11%, though it sounds small, it's quite large and powerful. To take Dolores Huerta, Cesar Chavez is sidekick, if you will, or she struggled along with him and was with him every step of the way during his challenges in the 60s. Si se puede. Yes, we can. I say, respect and honor these people. Immigrants is what makes this country and what makes California. Thank you so much for honoring him and her. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Annabelle. And I think that Gina is going to read actually Dolores Huerta's proclamation as well. Gina, are you?
Yes.
There you go.
Whereas Dolores Huerta was born on April 10, 1930, in Dawson, New Mexico. She was exposed to the hardships that her community faced at a young age, but was greatly inspired by her mother's work as a community activist. And whereas Huerta was taught by her family to give back to her community and be a voice and advocate for the working people of California. Huerta's own experience of discrimination and her innate sense of justice led her to become a prominent Hispanic activist. Activist. And whereas she went on to join the fellow activists, Cesar Chavez, and together they founded the United Farm Workers Association. Huerta was vital in organizing workers, negotiating contracts, and advocating for safer working conditions. She also fought for unemployment and healthcare benefits. And whereas Huerta was a recipient of many awards, including the Eleanor Roosevelt Human Rights Award in 1988, and the Presidential Medal of Freedom in 2012. 2012. And whereas she also created the Dolores Huerta Foundation, which provides civic engagement, education, LGBTQIA+ equality, health, and youth development programs to low-income communities. And whereas Huerta continues to be a powerful force for social justice and grassroots activism. Through her leadership, she continues to build on her legacy of civic engagement by advocating for the working poor, women, children, and those most marginalized in our community. And we recognize the profound impact Dolores Huerta has made on countless Americans and her lifelong commitment to justice for all, and the many trails that she paved for generations of activists. Now therefore, we, the members, on behalf of the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim the April 10, 2022, as Dolores Huerta Day.
Beautiful. Thank you, Gina.
And she's also going to be speaking at an event for a group that I belong to called Latina Syntec in a week, in a couple of months.
Gina, where does she live?
I don't know. But I've seen her in San Francisco, and now she's going to be doing this other event in San Francisco. So she's still out there, in her 90s, I guess.
She's actually in the Bay Area.
I don't know.
Yeah, she's actually in the Bay Area. I'm fortunate enough to work with an organization that works with Latino immigrants new to our country to help them assimilate to our ways. So I met Miss Huerta. That was a big deal for me. Again, I appreciate the time. Thank you for honoring both Cesar Chavez and la señora Huerta.
Thank you.
Thank you for being part of it, both of you, Gina and Annabelle. I really appreciate it. Okay, we will go next to our agenda overview. And do we have Tom Williams here? I'm sure he's here.
We do, Mayor. Good evening to you. Good evening, the City Council members of the public. My name is Tom Williams, City Manager. So real quick, on the agenda overview this evening, we have item number two. It's our agenda overview and staff briefing. Under those items, we also have calendar of events and reports and bills and claims. There is one change to the calendar of events. And on the calendar for March 26, which is this Saturday, we had the City Council goal setting, but that's been continued based on all the council member schedules. We're going to incorporate that in an April meeting on a city, on a city council evening to discuss goals and a budget study session. So that will be coming up this next April, but it will not be happening this Saturday, 26. So that needs to be removed from the calendar. Then we have reports and bills and claims. Then we move on to item number three, which is approval of the meeting minutes. Two items, regular meeting minutes for January 11, 2022, and a special meeting of January 18, 2022. Item number four, oral reports from city committees and commission chairs. We have none this evening. Then we move into public communication. This is the place on the agenda that any member of the public can address the City Council. On any item not on the agenda, the public comment is limited to three minutes. Then we move to consent calendar. We have five items on the consent calendar, starting with item number five, and that is to receive and file the monthly general fund and financial report update for the period ending February 28, 2022. Item number six is the Recreation Center Design and Construction Update. I did receive a request from Councilmember Snyder to remove this item from the agenda to discuss the specimen trees. Item number seven is to authorize the expenditure of $313,000, $313,521,000 for sewer modernization. That's Fund 661 from the CIP. We're taking advantage and accelerating a sewer replacement over on the east side of TOD2 in the Millbrae Stationery specific plan. There's also a design component of 169,500. Talking with the city attorney, we do need to remove this item. There is an additional finding that the City Council needs to make. We are requesting they remove item number seven. Item number eight is to consider adoption of a resolution endorsing the California Recycling and Plastic Pollution Reduction Act. And item number nine is to consider approval of a fee waiver for the 2020, 2022 Millbrae Field Day scheduled for April 23, which is a fundraiser for the new Recreation Center. Then moving on to public hearings, we have no public hearings this evening. Existing business, there are no items on existing business. Then we move to new business. We have two items, starting with item number 10, and that is to accept the housing element annual progress report for 2021 and authorize transmittal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, known as HCD, and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. Item number 11 is the introduction of Age Friendly City Initiative. Then we move to council comments and adjournment. Mayor, and then as part, if there are no questions on the agenda, I'd like to just then provide my quick staff briefing.
Just a really quick question, because I'm sorry, I have dogs barking here, but item number seven is use, on consent, you said that Councilmember Snyder wanted to take out, remove item number six. And what did you say about item number seven?
And item number seven needs to be removed because there is an additional finding that the City Council needs to make as we accelerate.
Beautiful. So consent calendar would only be five, eight, and nine?
Correct.
Thank you. And I do see a hand raise. And Ron, we will acknowledge your raised hand if we could just get through our city manager's report, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Before I get into my actual report, and before we begin the meeting this evening, I just wanted to mention a few things regarding how City Council meetings are conducted. I realize that for many people, this may be the first time that they participated in a City Council meeting or a public meeting. And interestingly, I was reading, some of you may have read it in Ink Magazine a couple of months ago. They said that people's worst fear is not heights or flying or insects, but it's actually public speaking. And so I just want the public to keep in mind that the City Council, the city welcomes all input, and every member of the City Council and the public deserve the respect from all of us in attendance. And that City Council meetings are in fact the place where, and time, time and place where we conduct the public's business and the business of the city. So it's important that these meetings proceed with the highest of decorum, respect for one another, and with civility. And many items your elected representatives, the City Council must deal with, are controversial, with many views and opposing positions. This sometimes leads to passionate arguments and strong convictions. But the City Council and staff, we do work very, very hard to listen and take into consideration everyone's opinion and input across all segments of our community, trying to balance the needs of everyone and the input of everyone, not just special interests or those people that choose to come and speak at this council meeting or any council meeting. So it's important that the participating public maintain respect for other speakers. Please know again that every member of the public who wishes to speak will be afforded the opportunity to speak. And freedom of speech and the public process is paramount. And when people do stay differing views or opinions, they should be able to do so without intimidation, without interruption, jeering, or out-of-turn disruptive commentary. In doing that, it's a disservice to the speaker, and it detracts everyone's attention away from the speaker and the courtesy of them being heard. So lastly, sometimes there are many people who would like to speak, and as such, public comment is sometimes limited to ensure that everyone can be heard, depending on how many people would like to speak, and to ensure that the meetings do move along efficiently. So please respect this time. And in addition, besides the council meeting itself, your position and your views can be communicated at the City Council via letters or electronic communication. Those portals can be found on our website, City of Millbrae, and that can be communicated to any member on the council. So I thank you for allowing me this time. We're definitely a healthier community when we have great public participation and input. So with that, Mayor, real quick, we do have some exciting things that are happening. Our Public Works, just a quick road update, that the City Public Works Department will be installing two new stop signs and pedestrian crossings at the intersection of Tioga and Morningside Drive this week. This work will be done between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. throughout the week. We have a community garden cleanup, so anyone that's interested could come down and mault a weed and plant at the garden cleanup, which is this Saturday, March 26, at 11:00 a.m. It's 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. And so all community gardeners and volunteers are invited to attend the spring cleanup at the community garden, which is located in Central Park. There's also an environmental essay contest. What can you do to inspire community-wide change to reduce greenhouse gas emissions within the city of Millbrae? So the city is implementing the Climate Action Plan, which is a roadmap to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and create new programs and services that will support the community and businesses in doing the same. So to engage our youth across the community about reducing greenhouse gas emissions and to inspire others, the city's administering an environmental essay contest for high school students. The contest will run March 3 through April 4, and winners will be announced Friday, April 22, for Earth Day. Applicants must be Mills High School students or Cappuccino High School students or a high school student residing in the city of Millbrae. And just a huge thank you to our sponsor, Peninsula Clean Energy, and South San Francisco Scavenger, and the Blue Line Transfer Company for providing the academic scholarship or sponsorship awards. So to learn more about it, you can visit our website, or you can call 650-259-2444. So again, this is an environmental essay contest. You can get information on the city's website or call the city at 650-259-2444. Also, there's another round of micro-business grants that are now available. So the newest micro-business relief grants are here. And so if your business is made up of less than $50,000 in 2019, or made less in income of $50,000, 2019, pre-pandemic, and you were hurt by COVID, you may be eligible for a $2,500 grant. The eligibility forms can be found at smc covidgrant.com. And if you need language assistance, there is a language assistance phone number at area code 650-321-2193, extension 1103. I know that's a lot of information, but you can check our website for that information. And then lastly, Millbrae Recreation Sixth Grade Basketball is starting. So if parents are interested, they can sign up their student for the sixth grade basketball program. Kids will practice and play five-on-five basketball games against other, it's a city program, but other schools. And so the program runs from April 4 through the 29th, and registration is open to Millbrae school participants, as well as private school or other school participants of children that reside in Millbrae. So we also still need coaches. So if anybody's interested, they can also look on our website under our Recreation Department. And then lastly, Mayor, I'd like to introduce Ms. Isabel Carlos, who is out there. Isabel joins our team as our interim HR Director. She has 20 years of experience in municipal management. She has her Master's of Business Administration from the University of Redlands, and her undergraduate degree in Business Administration from Cal Poly in Pomona. She, her last position was in a Southern California city, city of Paris, as the Assistant City Manager. She's also been HR Director and HR Manager. So I'm so happy to introduce Isabel Carlos to our team and bring her on board, you know, as we discussed, providing much-needed filling of the hole in our, in our human resources department. So welcome, Isabel. She's been on board all week, and already she's been a pleasure and been part of the team. So welcome, Isabel.
Welcome, Isabel.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Mayor, that then concludes staff update.
Thank you so much. So with our overview, I'm going to move to the approval of minutes. We have the regular minutes from January 11, 2022, and January 18, 2022. I said, I think I said 2002. I meant 2022 on both years. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Fun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen.
Aye.
Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
The City Council approves the regular meeting minutes of January 11, 2022.
I'm on a meeting.
What?
I sent you a
Sorry. And the special meeting minutes of January 18, 2022, by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to move to, we don't have any oral reports, so I'm going to move to public communication. So anything that is not on the agenda that anybody would like to speak, I would like to see. Let's see, we'll start with, Councilmember Snyder, your hands raised. Was that for the motion? Okay. So it doesn't, you're not asking a question. There you go. Thank you. All right, it looks like we have, how many people that would like to speak tonight? Four?
It's like five, Mayor.
Okay.
Six. Six now.
Let's start with Janet Fogarty, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Janet Fogarty of 1126 Hillcrest Boulevard here in Millbrae. And I'm speaking tonight as the Chair of the Recreation Center Fundraising Committee. And I'd like to bring to your attention that our major fundraiser coming up for the Millbrae Rec Center rebuilding fund is a field day, and it will be April 23 at Taylor Field from 9 till 12 that day. And the field day is a peer-to-peer fun program, like a walkathon, but with games. And we're looking for families to form teams to participate. The games are basketball free throws, an egg-and-spoon race, a hula hoop marathon, and a beach ball carry race. There's live registration on a site. It's at https://bit.ly, B-I-T-L-Y dot com, forward slash Millbrae Field Day, and you can find out more about it there. We're also looking for sponsors, because the idea here is both to have fun, but also to raise funds to help furnish the new recreation center and to provide some of those heritage trees in the area around the Rec Center. To date, the fundraising committee has raised over $200,000. You can kind of see behind me is that thermometer. There it is. We're looking to raise another $50,000 with this event. There are matching funds of up to $12,500 available on a one-to-one match. Any business or person who donates $500 or more will get their name on the Rec Center donor wall. And the team with the most donors and the team with the most donations will be entered into a drawing for two free classes from the Millbrae Rec Department. This is item nine on your consent calendar to waive the city fees to use Taylor Field for this event. And we hope that you'll join us that day, because we think it's going to be a lot of fun, and we hope we're going to raise a lot of funds. So thank you in advance from your Recreation Center Fundraising Committee.
Thank you, former Mayor Fogarty. I, I can't see my, my list of people here, so help me out here.
We have Jean.
Are Jean want?
Go, go ahead, Eduardo.
Jean, you want, I mean, excuse me, Eduardo, do you want to call on people? Because I can't see the list right now.
Okay, yeah, I will do. Jean, Jean, are you able to?
I'm ready to go.
Okay.
Okay. So on March 8, our City Council approved an increase in water rates to align the rates with the increases in the purchase price for water, and I fully support this action. Tonight, I do want to question the staff report associated with this rate change and our council's approval of it. I reviewed the recording and the failure to provide useful information regarding ongoing costs for maintenance. The past cost related to predictable failures was noted by council members, and they approved the funding level without the data to actually quantify future actual costs. It is not popular to increase fees for services such as our water. Likewise, it was not popular to support adequate funding to support infrastructure maintenance for our wastewater services. This has not been distant history. The rates paid did not fully support safe function of those systems, and spills of untreated material into the bay occurred. Our water rates and the rates of our unborn grandchildren for water will be outrageous due to delayed infrastructure maintenance and fines for the base bill. I point this out because there are methods to analyze the age of systems, types of failures, and develop and plan to intervene before failure. The staff reported many planned large projects were not completed in the past fund year. We should be able to see the reasons why. We may need to adjust our water rates upward even more to keep ahead of our freshwater, stormwater, wastewater disasters. So I urge the council to examine this issue with the careful attention that is needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. And I'm sure that staff will get back to you on that. I hope somebody took notes on that for her. Thank you, Jean, and I I'm sure that staff will get back to you on that. I hope somebody took notes on that for her. Eduardo, could we go to the next speaker? I I don't know why I don't have the list of people. I think it's because we're screen with the timer on screen sharing.
Yes, Mr. Steve Hong. I I think you are muted, Steve. Can you unmute?
Thank you for reminding me. I was muted. So I'm here tonight just to voice my opinion on the recent vote to choose map G as the. As the map to cut up the City of Millbrae into district for voting elections. As many others have spoken before and on Nextdoor. Many of us in Millbrae oppose this map because it what it does to the East Millbrae community. What I don't understand is why there was no action to address some of the concerns that were raised by the public. There was no movement to offer any explanation to the community on why there were. Why the map G was chosen. And I can only believe that. The tabling of the Social Equity Commission that was raised last summer. And the fact that it was never voted on and has been tabled until today. Certainly helped. The lack of oversight by other people in the community. I wish the City Council would. Offer up some type of explanation as to why they voted this way. Why they ignored the community who raised other maps. Why there was no discussion about the merits of various maps and why map G was decided on. I guess the only recourse for those of us who do not approve of the City Council's action. And the selection of map G. Is to make sure that we get. Different city council members in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Eduardo.
Yes, Gina Miranda.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much for the three minutes this time around. I wanted to touch on something that I didn't get to say last time, and I I had wanted to start with thanking the City Council members. With the redistricting specifically, because I I know how how much work it is and how. It it's hard to get, you know, to get any any recognition for it. And I also wanted to thank Councilman Holliver. He helped me understand way back when, when he was canvassing in my neighborhood. He helped me understand how the council works. Which I had no idea of at the time. And I assumed, like probably many people do, that that council members were full time employees. And then he told me, no, I have a full time job. And I just want people to know that because there's so much time, so many hours that is spent. Especially now that we have to come up with more candidates for for District Two in my case. We need to know what they're getting in. They need to know what they're getting into. And so let's let's keep working together to to open that up. And I I did want to say, aside from all of that, yes, I I definitely still felt unheard with that map G situation. It's so important. We're we're a community of interest here on the east side of Millbrae. We have the most affordable housing. And I can't tell you why people didn't see all of those notifications that you put out. I did. I can tell you why I didn't understand the notifications that I saw. So I I'm definitely open to working together with folks to to get to build more transparency. Like I said, work together. And I I also want to share again, this this feeling of being a stepchild. I I hear that a lot here on the east side of Millbrae and it's not, it's not a good look. It's not a good feel. It's poor me kind of thing, but but people feel that a lot. And I just want to make you guys aware of it. And last time, let's keep working together. Thank you.
Ron.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry.
Excuse me.
Ron. Sorry.
Hi, my name's Ron Raquel. I'm addressing the City Council again about the intersection at Millbrae Avenue in Magnolia. Once again, last night I was walking. I almost got run over again. By. Speedy car. I had the right of way. They inched out and then they decided to. Zoom right past me, so I moved back. I value my life and I'm sure I'm not the only one that's encountered this. It blows my mind that that intersection is not a controlled turn light. Left north and southbound direction. I brought it up numerous times at other meetings and Andrew Yang is working on it. But funding is really limited right now and it has to be reconfigured. But this is a fatality waiting in the making. I've seen at least two accidents. With vehicles in my lifetime at Millbrae, but in the last three years, I've almost been hit thirty times and. My luck is going to run out at one point. I'm sure the city doesn't want. Someone to get killed at that intersection by a speedy car. Or vehicles, I mean. I don't know what it's going to take to expedite the situation. Andrew said that I need to. Get a petition going, but I really urge the City Council to apply pressure to get this intersection controlled. I'm just surprised that there aren't many more accidents at that intersection. And I've once again have brought it up at meetings when we were in person and I brought it up. In our Zoom meetings at the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. And I've reached out to Ruben a couple of times and he gratefully graciously answered the phone. A couple of times and I just don't know what to do at this point. Maybe I need to. Not obey the traffic lights and. Just walk when I feel it, when I feel it's safe because crossing that intersection when I have the right of way. I almost get T bone every single time inches away. And if I want to fight it, the car is going to. Beat me every time. So I just hope the City Council tries to. Do their due diligence and try to expedite the situation of getting Andrew. The funds at this intersection because it's just a dangerous intersection. And I hope you guys will. Listen to my plea because I my luck is running out crossing that intersection and I value my life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Eduardo.
Reginald Dewey.
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 Good evening. I am a member of the ARC Steering Committee and as you all know, ARC was started a couple of years ago as a result of the social unjust that was going on in the country. And a few of us banded together. We held a couple of community forums. We listened to people in Millbrae. We found out that there's issues in the city of Millbrae when it comes to equity and inclusion. So we decided to do something about it. We actually wrote a proposal. We sent it to Washington, D C and. The City of Millbrae, based upon our proposal, was voted one of the top three. As far as community groups dealing with inclusion and equity. Since then, we have approached each one of the City Council members with an idea of a social equity commission. We you invited us to your offices. You gave us coffee and donuts. You shook our hands. You said, yes, we invited you to our ARC meeting. We gave you coffee and refreshments. You agreed with us. You shook your head, yes. We said, can we ask for your support? You said you can bank on it. Well, as you know, a couple of weeks ago, map G all of a sudden surfaced out of. I guess nowhere. And a lot of community members realized that what was going on with map G, that there was an entire part of the city of Millbrae that was just being disenfranchised. It was cut up into three districts. So people that in that community didn't really have a voice because their voice was being divided. We pleaded with you on the last City Council to rethink it, to hold your horses and to rethink it and listen to the community. But you hurried up and you hurried a vote through. And. What you have told us, when you said we can bank on it, what we have found out that you wrote us a blank check. The check said insufficient funds. You literally failed half of the city of Millbrae, a city that needs your help. And so as Steve Hom said, you know, if you're going to go forward with this, there's only one recourse. Since in the last two years, the ARC roles have grown tremendously. So we've got a lot of support. We're going to educate the community on what happened. And we want equity and inclusion. We want you to keep your word to what you said. Don't be the typical politician that smiles, shakes your hand, pats you on the back and behind closed doors does something different. Thank you.
Thank you. Who is next?
Amy Lauer.
Amy, you're up.
Thank you. I am Amy Lauer and I'm here to read a letter. For the public, one of the ways to get a statement in the public record is to submit a letter to council. And these letters are not read out loud. So on behalf of Joy Pasamonte Henry, who's a well known. Volunteer here in the community. She's at a school book, school bond campaign meeting. You know, she's president of the Millbrae Education Foundation for many years, served as P T O president at Mills and on and on. So I told her I would read this letter. Dear Mayor Oliva, Vice Mayor Papin, City Manager Williams and Council Members. I had a conversation with my daughter this afternoon who was distraught and exhausted. She's fourteen and a majority of her friends and classmates don't look like she does. In fact, they probably never will. Instead of just getting to be a teenager, she has to deal with racist comments or jokes. Some said naively, others with ill intent. She is not only a minority, but she will never be Asian enough, black enough or Hispanic enough. I have to tell my fourteen year old she needs to be tougher, fight harder and stand up for herself. Which is why my friends and neighbors are reaching out to you and speaking up. Not to cause necessarily trouble or to make noise. We are standing up for our neighbors who cannot stand up for themselves or fight harder because honestly, they're just trying to make everyday work. When you're telling us it's too late, we gave you an opportunity. We, your constituents, are asking you why and what can you do for us to make it better? As I mentioned in my op ed, the city did everything right on paper, so you can check the appropriate boxes. And people stepped up hoping it was not too late. The message you are collectively sending to everyone in and outside of Millbrae. Is you don't care enough to make this right. Or even explain how the solution makes things better. I would like to believe that we all want to do what's right. Many of us have made the choice to speak up or write to you, not because we have free time on our hands or have anything personal against you. We don't. But because we are hoping something positive and humbly will come of all of this. Thank you for your time, Joy Pasamonte Henry.
Thank you, Amy.
Angelina, before you go, may I please have your full name for the record?
Yes, my name is Angelina Cahalan, C A H A L A N.
Thank you.
So I'm a resident of East Millbrae in the Lamita Park neighborhood. I moved here in June of two thousand and two, and when I moved to Millbrae, I wanted to get involved in the community. And I've always been passionate about justice and equity and inclusion issues. And I really looked for something and there wasn't much happening back then. Eighteen years later, Millbrae ARC started and I have been honored to be a part of that. The last two years, we've seen activism and engagement. And then just a couple of weeks ago, to see people coming out. And getting involved was so exciting to see that happening in Millbrae. For me, as a community member, I was very excited about that. However, at the meeting, I got the feeling that this was new and not something very excited or welcomed by the City Council. For me, what being American is, is democracy. It's of the people, by the people, for the people. There's a fourth branch of government and that's the people. And I'm excited to see people, especially on this side of El Camino. Getting really passionate to think about the development that's happening in the community and the decisions that are being made. The flooding issues, the. Train and airport noise, light rail coming in. Both getting really excited. And I really invite you all as representatives to take this as an opportunity to represent. To listen to constituents and and engage us and not just write us the blank check, but truly represent us. The. Sorry, I'm drawing a blank. My dog's chewing my hand. But. You know, this is an exciting time and you know, the City Council maybe for many years has felt like a board meeting, right? Where you can not have many people watching and make decisions without much repercussions and it just happens. But I think that's changing in Millbrae today and it's truly becoming the public entity that it is. So. I look forward to continuing to work with my neighbors, to be more involved, to come to meetings, to express our voices and have conversations with you all. And I truly hope that we will have honest conversations and true representative, true representation. And not just the support, but actual votes in the right direction for what all of Millbrae needs and especially the unique. It needs of East Millbrae. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelina.
Michael Kelly.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, City Manager Tom Williams and esteemed City Council Member and as residents. Michael Kelly here in Millbrae's or just off Millbrae Avenue, and I wanted to share a little bit of perspective. Around what's transpired with the redistricting as well as Millbrae's history in general. Virtually every one of those five districts that have now been decided has a history, has a legacy of racism. Every one of them have housing covenants that prevented people of color from owning homes in the new house areas being built. So that is our history. It is incumbent on us to 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 overcome that, to to fight for injustices. To not just be non racist, but to be anti racist. And that's why I got involved in the Millbrae Anti Racist Coalition. And ultimately, the most foundational aspect of that is the right to vote. And I was really disappointed with the redistricting process. I think there was a solid effort made into the effort, but the overall assignment gets a failing grade. I heard comments from various council members that, oh, well, this is the most equal splitting up of the districts. And that is absolutely missing the mark of what tying together communities, communities of interest are. You don't, you don't spread them out to make them most equal. You bring those those elements together for the communities that share those interests. And and you just failed at that, City Council. It's disappointing. It was also disappointing that it was not made to be. An inclusive participatory event in the last council meeting. And it's not just me. If you look at a columnist for the newspapers, you look in the San Mateo Daily Journal, the the columnist Rudy Espinoza Murray. He talked specifically about the fallacies that council members in Millbrae made. Quote, dividing a community of interest into separate districts allows them to choose more than one representative. More than one city council member said that. It's just factually wrong. They repeated this and experienced mapmakers and demographers. They say the the way to eliminate the power of a group is you draw a line through the district. And then they get disillusioned and they don't get their voices heard. They stop voting. The other point that was a fallacy is, oh, we should split the downtown area so more council members make it a priority. That that's wrong too. Because just because, and again, I'm quoting the columnist here. This isn't just my thoughts. It's Rudy Espinoza Murray. So you can look in the just March fourth issue of the journal. But just because a council member is voted in by the district, it doesn't mean they don't have a voice. In the day over issues in another district. At the end of the day, each member, each council member has an equal vote. So it was really disappointing the way that was handled. I hope we can do better. And I was told that my comments last time were perceived as a threat. And you know what? I threatened you with democracy. I'm threatening you with voting and what ARC is going to do in supporting candidates that represent the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, do is it? Is there any other hands raised? Okay, is it, is there any other hands raised, Eduardo?
I do not see any other hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. Good public comments. I would enjoy Pasavantes Henry had a public comment that we all received. And Amy Lauer read that for all of us. So with that, we're going to go to the consent calendar.
Mayor, may I just say a few comments? So just, you know, as I mentioned earlier, my comments that, you know, for members of the public. As maybe this is the first time they're getting involved in city council meetings. The council members cannot respond to any item not on the agenda. So during public comment, these items are not on the agenda. And under state law, the Brown Act, the city council cannot comment. So kind of unfortunate. But with that, I will say that, you know, the city spent four months informing these district maps. We had over 70 communities of interest forms that were submitted, 40 maps. Eduardo and I were here on Saturday morning, starting at 7:00 AM, going to farmer's market, having computers, computer laptops open to the public to draw maps. So it wasn't just the last meeting. It was four months of solid effort and community engagement. And as I said, you know, balancing everyone's interests, not just those that are opposed to Map G. So I hope everyone appreciates that. Unfortunately, you all weren't here at the seven previous public hearings where we had other members of the public that aren't here this evening weigh in. And I just want everybody to realize that it's this group, but it was also other groups that participated in other areas of the city that helped shape and form the district. So I don't know if Mike Conneren has anything further to say as the attorney in the process. I will also say that the attorney that litigated this, and this is governed by state law. This is not something that the city council set forth to do. It's covered by state law. And under the law, we only had three months to get this done. That's per statute. We did receive three extension of time from Mr. Shankman, who was the attorney, that threatened to litigate the city. And by the way, Mr. Shankman, just for writing the letter under state law, gets a check from $30,000 from the taxpayers of the city in Millbrae. So that's how kind of crazy the CBRA is, in my opinion. But anyway, Mike, I don't know if you have anything to say about the process.
Well, City Manager, you did follow the legal process. You know, I know you, there were extensive, you know, quite a number of public hearings and outreach was done. It's a difficult process. Drawing lines is never going to necessarily make everybody happy. Just on the, on the Brown Act, certainly the public is encouraged to comment during the public comment period. The council can't discuss matters that are brought up in public comment. We can make, they can make a brief response or ask staff to follow up. But we're not allowed to have a discussion of the items that are raised. Just part of giving the whole public, not just the people who make public comment, the chance to understand what is going to be acted on. And so the matters that are being acted on are put on the agenda and that's publicly advertised at least three days before a regular council meeting. That's all.
Thank you.
So I want to co-tail on that comment. Thank you, Mike. Exactly where I was going. I think that for those that had commented tonight, there's, I'll speak for the five of us. Anybody else wants to speak differently? But we're all accessible. You can pick up the phone to me or any of, any one of these council people. And we're happy to have a conversation to, to just listen more, more than three minutes. Or, you know, hear where we're at. So whatever you want, I'm here for you. And I think I'm going to speak for the rest of the council. They're very easy to find. All right. With that being said, I would like to move on to the consent calendar. And from the consent calendar, we're going to pull items six and seven. Is that correct?
Correct, Mayor.
So number five, receive and file monthly general fund financial report for the period ending February 28th, 2022. And item number eight, adopt a resolution endorsing the California Recycling and Plastic Pollution Reduction Act. And number nine, approval of the fee waiver for the 2022 Millbrae Field Day. Do we have a motion? Eduardo?
Yes, sorry, Mayor. I just wanted to know for the record that we did receive a public communication from Joy Pasamonte Henry. That was for item number nine, that was distributed to the city council.
Thank you. Sorry, I missed that one.
Second to approve five, nine.
So we have a motion in a second. Can we please have a vote?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Holliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Papin.
Aye.
Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
The city council approves consent items five, eight and nine by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Just for curiosity, will we see, will we see six and seven at our next agenda, on our next agenda?
No, Mayor, those will be heard this evening.
Six and seven. We're going to, we're going to pull them on new business or?
No, no, we can hear item six now and then seven and then move into.
Perfect. So we didn't take them off. We just pulled them.
Pulled them.
Pulled them from consent, yeah.
Got it. All right. I thought Councilmember Snyder wanted it off, but she wanted it pulled. Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, maybe I shouldn't have said removed. I've removed from consent, so I've.
I'm like, how does that happen? But I let it go. All right. Councilmember Snyder, recreation center and construction update. Did you have a question or do you want to have a report first?
I don't think I need a report, but for the public, if you looked at this agenda item, it is saying that there are two specimen trees that the cost, the cost of specimen trees of any species is really amazing. It's incredibly expensive, but that they couldn't get big trees out of maple trees and instead want to substitute them with oak trees. And the staff report shows a photograph of the two oak trees. Well, I have an oak tree in front of my house and I will tell you that they are a bear to clean up from. And if one of these oak trees is covering the childcare center, it's going to be a constant mess. And the leaves themselves are very difficult to pick up. I would prefer that we hold off. I actually had asked the city manager to pull this so that staff could do more research on the difference in the cost or the ability to get a smaller maple tree for both the turnaround, the roundabout in front of city hall and the childcare center for a number of reasons. First of all, they will represent passive solar. They'll have leaves in the summer to block the heat hitting the building and provide shade. In the winter, they'll provide sunlight when they drop their leaves. But also the difference between, say, a maple tree and an oak tree or a eucalyptus tree is both oaks and eucalyptus do not like plants growing underneath them. And in fact, oak trees don't want water during the summer months. So if you're putting that oak tree out where everybody in my new district on Lincoln Circle, all they're going to see is that oak tree. They're not going to see other plants that will try to plant because eventually they will die because the chemicals that the oak tree puts into the soil. Now, the roundabout, I would again prefer to see a tree with more color, a tree that represents seasonality. And I talked to the city manager earlier today about trying to come up with additional funds or trying to find out when the maple trees might be available. And also the comparison of how quickly a maple tree grows versus an oak tree. But I honestly and strongly believe that an oak tree in the childcare center is the wrong species.
Are you asking that they may come back with another option for us?
Yeah, I'd like to come back. There's no rush, rush to plant those trees right away, although this is the right time of year to plant them. But to come back with some additional tree options and cost comparisons. And I'll go out and try to get more money. We're bringing the plant sale back. We raised, I know it's not much, a whole thousand dollars before we went into winter recess. But to try to get the right tree for the right place and trees, so for that roundabout, that we plant trees there that will allow lovely understory planting. Because that's the front of the rec center. We want it to look welcoming and happy and cheerful. So yeah, I'd like to see this come back.
Like how much more money would this be for your taste of trees?
I think it's not necessarily money. And the city manager, we had a hard time connecting today. It may be more an availability or a size issue.
So with council's permission, can we bring this back, city managers, so that Councilmember Snyder might make some suggestions and do some homework for us? It looks like Vice Mayor Gina, do you have something to say?
Yeah, the subcommittee. Ruben has his hand up too.
Oh, good. Thank you, guys.
So, yeah, I mean, we can get further analysis of the trees here. I don't believe Councilmember Snyder meant to say eucalyptus tree since they're highly dangerous. But there are five, so you did mention a eucalyptus.
No, I mentioned that they don't like things growing underneath them.
We're not, it's just sometimes the public, you know, I don't want anybody distracted here. We can get staff to report out on the comments made by Councilmember Snyder and evaluate the trees. Not oaks are all the same, could be different. Some, you know, I'm more than happy to talk to staff and an arborist about what we're getting into. So I see my colleague on the subcommittee, Councilmember Holliver is here. He might have a comment as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Ruben?
Yes, just a question. What is the lead time for getting the trees planted? Because we have opening ceremony that we're hoping have scheduled in a little over two months from now.
Yeah, Mary, I can answer. So that's the question. And that's a great question is, it's not the budget. It is the availability of the specimen tree, you know, box size that's not available. And SWA, who was the landscape architectural firm on the project, they're the ones that had been recommended as an alternative, the oak tree. We have not been able, and they have not been able to get from the nursery, the wholesale nursery that they order from. Or I think they checked several nurseries, actually, the availability of specimen maple trees. And they're just not available. So we could spend a couple of more weeks working with SWA. You know, exhaust the outreach to see if a, you know, 90-inch box specimen maple tree is available anywhere. Let's say it's from out of state. We can get the shipping cost and report back to the city council. But it's just an availability issue. We could go smaller. We could certainly go 48-inch box, but then it wouldn't be a specimen tree. And we'd lose probably, I mean, that's probably 10 years' worth of growth is the difference, you know, between a specimen tree and say a 48-inch box tree.
But is it that important to have it for the grand opening? Councilmember Holliver?
I think it is. It's, you know, it's the first thing that people are going to see. You know, this might be a really stupid question, so please forgive me, but is there any feasibility of perhaps transplanting a tree that's already existing somewhere in a Millbrae park and then replacing that with, you know, an immature, inexpensive tree that'll eventually grow?
I like that thought. That's my stupid.
The developer at the BART station promised us the trees, but they cut them down instead. We had an opportunity for several really nice trees.
Nice. Actually, if I, if I could.
Wait, wait a second, guys. Councilmember Holliver, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished, yeah.
That was a good comment. Do we have a response from that?
Can I, can I just say the trees from the BART station?
Wait a second.
It's pertinent to what Councilman Holliver said.
I wonder, he needs to, he needs to get that answered from staff.
And I did the research.
So staff's response to Councilmember Holliver, I think that's actually a great idea. We can work with SWA and look at some locations and see what the feasibility is of transplant, you know, transplanting a more mature tree. In my experience, we've done that before. I was on a project where we transplanted an 80-year-old tree and it was successful. So we can certainly look into that. And, and I think that's actually a very good comment.
Yeah, I do too. So that, so with, I'm going to go to Councilmember Snyder and then Vice Mayor. But it, it looks like we're going to have to bring this back to, to council for an update. Councilmember Snyder?
Okay, I love the idea of adaptive reuse of trees. And we looked into it before the demolition work started at the Gateway Project. There were 13 or 18 magnolia trees that were really healthy and would cost upwards of a quarter of a million dollars to move those trees. So there was, I remember talking to staff back at the time, as much as I would have saved them, we could have brought them over to an entire neighborhood and filled up a whole Monterey Park as an example. And it wasn't feasible.
Let's talk about the rec center tree, please.
I am, Mayor. I'm telling you that the cost of relocating a tree from the Gateway Project to Monterey Park, if you'd let me finish, was a quarter of a million dollars.
Per tree?
No, for the, however many there were, I'd have to go back and check my notes. I think it was 13 or 18 magnolia trees. And I wish we could have, but it was so exorbitant, it didn't make sense.
Thank you.
I will, I will say it is expensive, but, but it's something that we can look at and do our due diligence and work with our landscape architectural firm and contractor.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, we've relocated trees before. It has been done. All the palm trees on Millbrae Avenue were relocated from the Hyatt with the hotel over there. So sometimes developers help us out here, like the Hyatt did. Other times, they just won't do it. So we'll look into that and bring it back.
Perfect. I'm sorry to put you guys back to work, but that's, looks like the direction. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
One last question. With the type of oak tree, I am very happy, and Tom didn't mention it, but we have sold out all 50 trees, oak trees on the spur trail. But oak trees are also susceptible to sudden oak death, something we haven't talked about the last 10 years or so. So if oak tree is the tree they're going to come back with, let's make sure it's one that's more disease resistant. Or we could lose the tree just after we spent thousands of dollars on it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we get through this item on some of the things that needed to be decided. I mean, it says informational on the, you know, on the item itself. But then it says on the agenda, it says action. I just want to double check that. And I do see there are a few change order that needs to be approved. I just want to make sure we make progress on those things, you know, in the meantime, we keep this tree discussion going.
We probably want to bring the whole thing back.
I mean, it's informational on number six.
It's, it's actually action.
It is an action item because it's informational.
We will, we will, we'll bring the entire, yeah, the whole recreation center design and construction update will come back to us at our, hopefully, next meeting, if possible.
And those change order that was proposed on there, is it going to impact the, we wait?
No, we, we do need approval of the city council on some of those items to keep things moving.
I just want to make sure it doesn't become a schedule impact.
I think Jane Cow, our project manager, is present. Jane, do we need action tonight from the council? Just to confirm or no action?
Good evening, everybody. No, we don't need an action. The change orders are and can be processed with Tom's authority. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you, Councilmember Fung. That's a good point to take into consideration. So we'll take item number six for a future date, hopefully sooner than later, as Councilmember Holliver suggested for the opening. We need a beautiful tree there. All right, let's go to item number seven, authorizing an expenditure from the sewer modernization program fund 661 for the replacement and upsizing of a portion of sewer trunk main in Aviador Avenue. And adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Belucci and Associates for the utility infrastructure capacity upgrade project in the amount not to exceed $169,500. And I'm sure we have a report on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Mr. Harry Burrows, who is the city's interim city engineer for his staff presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'll just take a, hopefully a quick second here to give a brief background. It's an item that's supposed to be on consent. But I wanted to briefly illustrate the two aspects of the report that's before you and the item. So there's the item here in red, and I apologize that it's maybe hard for everyone to see. But the item here in red is the actual portion of sewer pipeline that is being proposed to be constructed by the TOD Developers Contractor. The portions in blue on this diagram are portions of sewer line that are being designed by Belachian Associates. And just to orient everyone, here's the BART station. El Camino Real is over here. Highway 101 with Millbrae Avenue bisecting this diagram. Everything in orange, brownish-orange on this drawing is existing sewer lines. And this green portion of sewer line is a portion of the backbone infrastructure that's being replaced by that's being replaced by the um, life science projects that were recently approved, the Alexandria project um, here that straddles Adrian Road. So as, as the city manager mentioned, um, when this item was pulled from consent, um, wanted to have a brief discussion to allow the city council to make a finding related to um, not requiring this work in question, the, the red work, the actual construction work, to be publicly bid. And so wanted to take a quick second to reiterate both the need for the expediency as well as the cost savings that we'll realize in constructing this work now um, utilizing TOD number two's um, developers' um, contractor. So the developers' contractors on the site and mobilized as we speak, um, Aviador Avenue has been partially constructed. Um, the sewer line is not directly underneath the roadway itself, is actually slightly to the west of the road, but it is underneath future improvements that are planned to be built that we've asked them to hold off on sidewalks, some bio-retention basins. Um, the tie-in at the southern end will require some, um, actually um, a portion of the roadway to be um, excavated. And luckily, the final lift of pavement is not out on Aviador, so we have the opportunity now, there's a, a window of opportunity before they finish to, to get this work done. Um, as I said, performing this work now avoids the removal of surface improvements, sidewalk curb gutter, the bio-retention basins and, and portions of the roadway. Um, with this opportunity to install the sewer now, um, before these other improvements are, are in place, we can avoid the normal process of uh, preparing plans and publicly bidding the work. Uh, because in doing so, will not save the city um, time or money. Um, there's no advantage in um, going through the public bid process. And, and that's why we're recommending that this work proceed now. Um, the work will be performed by the developers contractor, as I said. Block Cahill through one of their subcontractors, Preston Pipeline. All work will be performed by union crews using prevailing wages. And the city will reimburse the developer upon the completion of the work. One question that um, I anticipate um, people may have is, why was this work not included in the original um, TOD project, the um, Gateway at Milbury Station project? And the reason is that this sewer is not served by that project at all. The entirety of the TOD number two project is served by this line here, this orange line, um, that was improved and upgraded by the TOD um, number two developer. So that, that concludes my brief presentation, and I'd like to turn it over to the city attorney to um, discuss the um, action that the council needs to make this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Um, a- as we all know, uh, generally, public construction contracts require competitive bidding. It's a process that helps ensure integrity in the contracting process. However, um, there is established case law, including a case Graden versus the Pasadena Redevelopment Agency, uh, that authorized uh, agencies to uh, to dispense with a competitive bidding in a situation in which that bidding would not be in the public interest, it would not be advantageous. So um, we will hold off on signing the resolution here until we can add language. Um, uh, after the uh, wording that says now therefore be resolved, that's the city council, the city of Milbury, uh, we will add in hereby finds that competitive bidding would not be advantageous or advantageous or availing in this situation. And go back to the text hereby authorize the expenditure uh, uh, for the, for the, for the sewer work. Um, that's it. It's a, it's a finding the council needs to make. Uh, but if you make it, then there is uh, established law that, that would support that as a legal contract. And as the city engineer mentioned, uh, the work at the BART station is being done under prevailing wage contracts. So uh, you have that assurance that that important public policy is being uh, respected in this kind of context. Happy to answer any questions.
So is Belachi doing the, the, the yellow line too?
No, Belachi, so um, we're taking the opportunity now to um, expedite the, if you want to um, think of it this way, the missing gaps of, of the sewer line. So like I stated, this portion here in green that's being done by the life sciences projects um, leaves this gap in blue here um, of um, sewer line that still needs to be upgraded. So we're taking the opportunity to have Belachi design that now so that in the future, we can go out and publicly bid that portion of work. And as long as they're doing that design, we're adding in this, these other portions of soup, of blue lines up above, um, adjacent to the Highline Canal, which will provide needed improvements and help the system with some um, surcharging that we have in the system um, um, that parallels the Highline Canal. So we want to have them, sorry, we want to have them design all of that work and so that we can go out with a future public works contract and, and bid that portion of work.
So Harry, the whole, the whole blue line is going to be less, is going to, not to exceed one hundred and sixty-nine thousand five?
No, no, no. Um, I apologize. The, 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 the design, the design of all of the blue lines will not exceed one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, not the construction. They're just doing the design of it.
Okay, so it looks like you already have the design, but okay.
Well, so when I say design, it's preparing the actual bid package, plans and specifications to go out to bid. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do you have any council comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Please, go.
Uh, so a quick question there. You're going on the one oh one uh, south on-ramp. There was a plan at some point in time to expand that on-ramp leading on to the south um, structure there. So is that um, being incorporated into this design? Because I don't want to come back later and have to redesign.
Yes, so I believe to answer your question, this section of um, blue line here would be a new portion of sewer line that we're proposing across the north end of the SFO property. And that's to, I, again, as I stated previously, to help alleviate some surcharging and flow issues um, here.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Well, no, no, no. It will connect into an, an existing um, manhole here and.
And again, not what I'm talking about.
Okay, okay.
The arrow down here, you have Milbury Avenue, there's a southbound ramp. That ramp.
Got you. I, I apologize. I thought you meant southbound exit ramp of a one oh one.
On, on-ramp.
Yeah, got you, got you. Sorry, um, councilmember. So, yeah, so this work here um, will be done most likely trenchless, um, either pipe bursting or with a horizontal directional drilling. So it will not impact the actual function of that um, on-ramp. It will not be an open trench across there.
Okay, I'm, I'm, just my concern is, that's fine, but that on-ramp, the southbound on-ramp is planned to be um, expanded at a certain point in time. There were discussions about adding a lane there. So I just want it clearly documented if we are somehow adding a lane there to get people onto the freeway, that we don't have to dig that up, disrupt, and everybody knows it's a brand-new sewer line.
Yep, that noted, absolutely.
Okay, that's, so I want to make sure here. Um, your city staff, before you came, Harry, had put that project in there for some reason. I just want it noted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is that a motion now?
Yes, it is. As amended, as legal counsel has amended.
Thank you.
Legal counsel can uh, reiterate that for the record if he wants.
Councilmember Schneider, you have your hand up.
Well, I'm happy to second it, but I had a question about what you meant by surcharging and overflow issues at Highline Canal. I, I hadn't heard that term before.
Um, the surcharging just means that um, during peak flows, that the um, fluids in the manholes rise above the level of pipe. It doesn't mean that it, it overflows out of the ground. It just means that um, instead of all of the liquids flowing through the pipe, it, it, it rises up in, into the manhole itself.
Okay. A- again, happy to see us taking care of it with everything else. Congratulations on the demolition that has started in that area. So great to get it all done now. I assume that this had to happen and didn't come through the infrastructure, but um, if it did, you, you would have had my support. And we have an infrastructure meeting next week, don't we? I think it's next week.
Thank you, councilmember Schneider, for the second, but we do have two hands up from the public. I'd like to hear from the public, please, before we go to vote. Angelina?
Um, I have more of a question than a comment, so I don't know if you all are able to answer that. Um, I'm looking at the Highline Canal there and knowing the flooding issues that we already have in Milbury, what's going to happen when construction is happening there with replacing the sewer lines? Um, and possibilities of increasing flooding during construction.
So we cannot answer that at this time, but, but we can get staff to answer you after this meeting. Is that okay with you?
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Angelina. And I think we had uh, Jennifer Wardy.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Ann. I, Harry, uh, just uh, to that question that uh, councilmember Papin raised about the on-ramp at uh, one oh one there, that area is really prone to flooding now. And I'm wondering if you could uh, in the design, look at how to alleviate that flooding at that intersection where those ramps are in, in the uh, Milbury Avenue overpass over one oh one. The water seems to collect there. And also, uh, whether or not the, the design, whoever's designing this is going to look at the issue of sea level rise, because of course that area is going to be very, very susceptible to that. Thank you.
Thank you. So Harry and city manager Tom, could you please get back to Janet and Angelina at a later time?
Yes.
Thank you, because those are great questions. Thank you very much. I'm certainly sure that it's concerns of all of ours as well. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollibur?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Papin?
Aye.
Mayor Oliva?
Aye.
The city council approves agenda item number seven with the noted amendments uh, by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we will move, we have no public hearing, so we'll move on uh, to existing business of which we do not have any tonight, on to new business numbered, item number ten, except the housing element. Annual progress report for twenty twenty-one and authorized transmital to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. And I would imagine we have a staff report on this.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Mr. Roscoe Mata, the city's planning manager for a staff presentation.
Thank you, um, Mr. Williams. Um, let me just share a screen here. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Roscoe Mata, and I will be making the presentation on the housing element annual progress report for the year of twenty twenty-one. The item tonight, the objective is to accept by motion the housing element annual progress report for twenty twenty-one and authorize transmital to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. The purpose of the annual report is um, to give um, the city's status, uh, it's reported on the city's status and progress of implementing the housing element of the general plan. It's a snapshot view of the current status of new affordable housing production in Milbury and progress towards meeting the regional housing needs allocation in Milbury. Uh, the city council public meeting is required to accept public comments on this item. And uh, this annual report is required to be submitted each year by April first. A little bit of an overview, there's tables, um, as you see with the uh, touches staff report, tables A and A two, these tables provide information on residential development at each stage of the development process. Uh, again, in twenty twenty-one, uh, these stages uh, include submitted application, entitlement, building permits, and completion via certificate of occupancy. Table B summarizes new permitted residential units by affordability levels and provides an overview of progress to date in meeting arena allocation. Table D provides a narrative update on the progress made on Milbury's housing common policies and implementation programs. And table H provides information on uh, lands declared surplus percent to the government code. Uh, this table here is in the report on page three, it's table one. I do want to note here, though, that um, the table in the report, uh, this figure uh, under twenty twenty-one permits issued is shown on this slide is sixteen. The report, it's erroneously showed as fifty-nine. And furthermore, um, the footnote uh, in the report shows fifty-three, that, that number is actually fifty-five. Um, so this table shows the uh, city's progress in issuing building permits for new housing construction to meet the city's uh, share of the recent, regional housing needs uh, in, by income category. So this uh, ha, this period covers the years two thousand and fifteen through um, uh, to, to the end of twenty twenty-two. And uh, as you can see here, the first three columns here, I'm sorry, the first two columns are the income levels as well as um, the arena allocation uh, by income level. And um, the next three columns are the permits that were issued. Uh, the third one is twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen building permits issued. The fourth one is the twenty twenty building permits issued. And then the twenty twenty-one uh, column in red is what we're reporting on this uh, annual report. Uh, so the total permitted units through twenty, through twenty twenty-one is four hundred and forty-seven. Um, uh, and then the second to the right column is the total arena units which are um, reported to HCD. So as you'll see, the arena, um, in the last column, uh, the remaining arena allocation for the above moderate has been met. So um, we still have work to do on the very low, low and moderate levels. Uh, so how do these numbers, how are these numbers affected by um, uh, pipeline projects? So this is for illustrative purposes only. So um, it, we have the first two columns that show the arena allocation. Uh, the third column shows what uh, the progress that we have made through twenty twenty-one. And then the columns in orange are pipeline projects that are current, that have either recently been approved or are currently actively being reviewed by planning. If these projects were to be, uh, have building permits issued this year, um, this is how that, how the uh, the permits would be affected by our arena. So as you can see here, uh, we would have satisfied the low level, uh, but still need a very low and, and moderate. Um, however, I do want to note that the reporting uh, for the, this item purposes is for twenty twenty-one. So anything that happens in this current year or future years will be reported during that calendar year. So in summary, uh, during twenty twenty-one, we issued premise on ninety total housing units, including thirty very low income units and fifty-nine low-income units. Majority of these eighty units were the core affordable housing project at the Gateway Project. And uh, we approved completion of nineteen total units, including um, three very low-income units and three low, uh, very low-income units and three low-income units. Furthermore, we have uh, continued to process several major planning applications for new housing, including um, receiving, we received three planning applications in twenty twenty-one for a total of three hundred and ninety-one total housing units. Uh, what happens if we don't meet the arena numbers? So jurisdictions that don't have uh, sufficient progress toward their above moderate uh, income level um, may utilize uh, state legislation, also known as SB thirty-five for permit streamlining. Um, however, as I noted previously, that the city has met this level for jurisdictions that have insufficient progress towards the lower income arena levels, so very low and low income. Um, projects that uh, submit subject to. Projects that submit subject to SB 35 would have to have at least 50% affordability at those levels. Um, these are the, uh, the low and low income the city has not met. So for program implementation, progress and achievements, staff is continuing to process rental housing assistance, home sharing through Hip Housing, and affordable unit resales and rental condos, uh, rental controls. Um, we've also, um, adopted amendments to the municipal code for onsite and new fee requirements for affordable housing as well as the commercial linkage fees. Uh, we've adopted resolution for affordable housing requirements and, um, regulations and resolution establishing affordable housing and new fees. And, um, uh, we've, we've also, uh, as part of housing-related efforts, we're also undergoing, um, a process whereby we're implementing the provisions of SB nine, um, to address, um, two-unit and urban loss splits. Uh, so in summary, staff is recommends that the City Council accept by motion the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2021 and authorize transmittal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and Governor's Office of Planning and Research. That staff is available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Roscoe. Any questions? I'm sure there's questions here. Any comments? Perfect. All right, I'll go to Councilmember Snyder.
Thank you. And Steph, I want to thank you for the staff report. I really liked how you put the current projects and under which state housing law they are, they are, and I'm going to be really blunt here. Getting away with doing the minimum amount of affordable housing development possible. I thought that was very well done. My, I, I, I see us going forward. I thank you all for doing this. But I would like to know if we could include some of the following things that are being discussed in California. The papers have been reporting that I think 40,000 homes in San Francisco, in the city and county of San Francisco, sit empty deliberately. Over a million homes sit empty in California. 60 Minutes, two weeks ago, talked about, uh, equity companies buying up the, the low, the starter homes, um, and then putting them on the rental market, which means that the starter homes are not available for people who can cobble up enough money to buy their first home and to begin to accrue equity. And I, I don't know if, I don't know what our short-term rental situation is. And I don't know if we've received any SD nine or 10 requests. Basically, I am hoping that Millbrae will identify problems that are greater than us that we could include in this report to Sacramento, for example. And the last example, when I heard, and I thank staff and I appreciate staff did the best job they did with the Anton project, but to cut down mature trees in a noise-impacted area means that the noise from the airport is going to hit that new parking garage and bounce right back into Marina Vista. The trees would have done something there. I know staff tried. I thank you for that. And to the residents of of that area, I am so sorry. But I am tired of Sacramento telling us what we can do here when they have no idea what pollution issues, of which noise is one of them, we're trying to deal with. So I'd love, I, I, I can see this going forward. I just wonder if our cover letter can say, these are the problems. SB 330 is giving us 11 new affordable units, but getting rid of eight existing ones for less than 5% out of Anton. I just, I, I would like us to push back on the Kevin Mullins and the Senator Hills and and I went and actually reread 330 today on Senator Skinner and Senator Weiner saying that we would be building more affordable housing if these guys would get out of the way. But I'm happy to vote for this, and I, I thank staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Snyder. Councilmember Oliver?
Thank you. Um, yeah, those were great comments, um, by Councilmember Snyder. Thanks again for all the work that went into this from the staff all a little bit. I think those comments, um, really emphasized how with the general plan update, we have to be very tedious about every little detail as to what is allowed and what is not allowed. Because it sounds like we have very little flexibility. I'm not talking about, you know, approving or rejecting projects, but about even making, you know, negotiating minor changes to some of these developments. Um, so, you know, I think we have to be extremely detailed. Um, we may want to, um, include some type of, uh, some flexibility if developers are willing to enter into a development agreement with us. I think that model worked pretty well for the TOD one and TOD two, um, projects. Um, and I think allow for greater community input, um, input from our staff. I think also in terms of the RENA, um, numbers, and I'm glad that we've met our numbers for the above, um, moderate level. Um, but the, the RENA numbers are very pretty heavily skewed towards the below-market rate, particularly very low income. And I think we'll be even more so in the next, um, RENA, um, cycle, uh, starting in 2023. Um, so I think that underscores, um, the need to, uh, keep the, um, inclusionary housing requirement with SB nine applications, um, to be able to, uh, develop some of those lower income, uh, very low or very low income, uh, units. Um, I think it also, I think we also may need to reopen the exclusionary housing ordinance that we had approved last year. And, uh, for that fractional fee, I think right now it starts at developments of four units or more. I think we may want to, um, assess that fee also to ADUs and JADUs and maybe even single-family homes. Not that very many single-family homes are being built in Millbrae, but, um, I think we really would need that to be, I think we're losing out on a lot of the housing that's being built and the ability to collect those fees. Um, so I'd like to see that come back at another time. Um, that's all that I have for now. Thank you.
Good comments, both from Councilmember Snyder and Councilmember Oliver. If I could just add to, uh, agreeing with everything that you said, we, we also need to, uh, kind of talk to our state representatives about restoration too, because we have and shelters, and there's things that we don't necessarily have to do in our city that we already do, that should be able to count for some of these RENA numbers and get some credit for what's being, being done there. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
It's fine, Madam Mayor. Yeah, no, I agree with my colleagues, and thank you for all the hard work and effort on the, um, lower income or low income, uh, aspect of SB nine in implementing that. I do think that is very important, and I do agree with the mayor on really converting un, underutilized, uh, properties and getting credit for that. Um, I'm wondering, Roscoe, I didn't see any, um, ADUs, are they separated out? Is that a part of your numbers? And thank you to the staff for this report. Uh, I just wondered if we had any in the mix. Um, while he's looking.
I, I do have an answer, yes. On Table A2, um, these are the new construction. It lists the ADU, so they are included.
So we are getting those. That's great.
That's great.
Um, as to the comment about, um, vacant units in San Francisco, I know a significant number of them, thousands, have been um, identified as rent control units that are vacant. So, uh, we do realize our obligation here, and we're trying the best we can. And, um, I think the public realizes the Anton development really um, was a blow to only get 5% affordable. So this council continues to battle on for the affordability, the low, the very low income units. Maybe we can even get redevelopment money back, but, uh, we'll keep our fingers crossed on that front. So thank you, everyone. We'll continue the battle here and, um, hopefully get some things moving along. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Fung?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, staff, for putting this comprehensive report together. Uh, and I think that's, everybody can see how important it is for us to continue, um, to produce affordable housing so that, you know, we're not going to be slapped by the state, you know, having them ending it, telling us what to do more than what they already did. Um, and then another thing is that, you know, one thing we can consider, and I've been thinking about it for a little while, is that, um, you know, in the midst of all this SB 330, SB nine, SB 10, uh, SB 35, that, you know, especially 35 and 330, uh, in the Housing and Calibratory Act, how some developers are using that, uh, in our city. We can consider, um, having, enacting our own affordable house, uh, our own density bonus ordinance that might be a little bit more enticing for developers to use and be able to maintain a certain amount of local control and how to guide the development the way we wanted it. And at the same time, be able to produce more favorable affordable housing rates, um, you know, especially on some of the mixed shoes developments, some of the downtown developments, a little bit more higher density. We can consider, um, you know, having our own density, local density bonus ordinance. Um, that will save time, that will save cost, and be able to guide development our way. Other cities have done it, and they have been successful at it. So this is something that I think, you know, we can consider.
Could you give an example of that? That's a very interesting comment. What other cities have done that?
So, you know, some of our larger metropolitans have done it. San Francisco have done that. And those are some things that we can consider, um, that has even more favorable affordable housing, um, production. Um, you know, with certain amount of density bonus and height and size, um, more, more flexible. Height and size limitations and density limitations. So, but, you know, I think that's one way for us to kind of, you know, gain back our local control and guide development the way we wanted it based on the zoning that we have today. So, but this is a discussion that I think we should explore further, Madam Mayor.
Uh, yeah, I love your comment. It, I think that we, I mean, the state surprecedes everything we do at this point, is what you're saying. And if we could take control and be ahead of them, is that kind of where you're, what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, we can enact local ordinances that it's, um, you know, that is even more enticing than a state, for example, uh, but we, but find a way to retain more local control uh, and have more favorable affordable housing productions that has even higher affordable house BMR rates, for example. San Francisco has done it. Uh, they call it on their self-legislation. So they have seen some early success, and I think this is something we can look into.
Interesting. Councilmembers, we have the public now. Can we hear from them, please? We have Janet Fogarty, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to echo the comments from your council. I, and I also want to point out that of the 663 units of housing that have been approved that are in the pipeline, 448 of those units are about two-thirds of them are from the Millbrae-Serra Station project in TOD one. And as you're aware, the California High Speed Rail Authority has held up this very important project uh, because they're threatening to take those lands. So to the point of the state telling the cities that they have to, they have to develop in the way the state thinks is best. We also need to push back and say, state, if you want housing, stop making it impossible for housing to be built by threatening to take the lands that have already been approved for two-thirds of the housing that's part of our housing, uh, requirement here. That is, uh, a very sad situation that high-speed rail has held this up. And those people who could be living in those homes, that they're losing that opportunity. The city that could be, uh, not only generating more revenue from those homes is losing that opportunity. The stormwater treatment plant that's supposed to be a part of that project and the California Drive extension that's supposed to mitigate the traffic impacts at Millbrae Avenue in El Camino, we're losing that because everything's being held up by California High Speed Rail Authority. So when you talk about pushing back to the city, the city pushing back to the state, uh, I think the city needs to be more forceful in pushing back to the state on what California High Speed Rail is trying to do, uh, in our city, taking that land from highest and best use to worst and lowest use as an at-grade parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought I saw one other hand. Let me see. Uh, Nathan?
Hi, yes. Uh, can you hear me? All right. Um, yeah, thanks so much for, uh, being, having the opportunity to talk to you all about this important topic. Um, uh, housing, obvious, definitely an issue that I pay attention to, and I'm very passionate about. And so I wanted to sort of, uh, talk about some of the comments that I heard, uh, from some of the council members and maybe try to provide some suggestions that might be more, uh, constructive. Um, or might help us get to where we all want to go. Um, so in, enough to build affordable housing, we need land, money, and will. I think I have seen from this council over multiple occasions that there is definitely the will to build, uh, affordable housing based on the frustrations that, you know, I share with you on some of the lack of affordable units that are being built and the projects that are, uh, coming through and, uh, being held up by high-speed rail. However, uh, that still doesn't solve the issue of land and the acquisition cost. And I think if you are interested in building affordable units, I don't think the exclusionary ordinance being considered, uh, inclusionary requirement, uh, being considered for an SB nine implementation ordinance is the way to go. Just based on the land costs alone, there's no way any sort of developer, whether nonprofit, uh, for-profit, or a homeowner seeking to, uh, take advantage of SB nine could would realistically recoup, uh, their amount of money they're spending to construct a unit if the, if they have to hold down the, the rent to, rent to the income levels, uh, for only one unit. I do, uh, want to piggyback on something that I heard Councilmember Fung say about, uh, the density, uh, bonuses, uh, that go above and beyond what the state is offering. This is actually something that the city of Berkeley, uh, is considering implementing, a citywide affordable housing overlay that would grant a density bonus, uh, for 100% affordable housing projects. Uh, and it is based on a model of, of being done in Cambridge that was passed in Cambridge, Massachusetts. These aren't terribly big cities, but they're trying to lead the way on affordable housing. So I would encourage, uh, the council and staff to study these policies. And I think, uh, in terms of our own general plan, we need to look very carefully about, at the density limits being suggested for the downtown area. Anything that's too low will, uh, prevent affordable housing from being built in the quantities that we all want. So please take a look at that, uh, as we go move through the general plan process. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Is that it? Is that, I don't see any other hands raised. Eduardo, do you?
No, I do not, Mayor.
Okay. All right, so do we, this is an action item, so we need to approve this.
Approval.
Thank you. Second. We have a, we have a motion and a second. Could please take a vote?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Papin?
Aye.
Mayor Oliva?
Aye.
The City Council accepts the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2021 and authorizes a transmittal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and Governor's Office of Planning and Research by a vote of five to zero.
Councilmember Snyder, your, your hand's still up. You're muted. You're muted. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to be really clear, SB 35, SB 330, and the other housing laws are reducing our ability to build affordable units. We couldn't do what Councilman Oliver was able to help us do with the Gateway Project. I hope our transmittal letter makes that very clear, and I hope that, um, we have two councilmen. And I hope that, um, we have two council members here on CCG Ledge Committee that this can be an effort by CCG to tell Sacramento that they can fix these laws. I am sure Senator Skinner did not intend for Anton to get away with building eleven units, less than five percent. Um, and that those people living there wouldn't have a chance to come back and live in the, the city they lived in. So I would love to see us be more proactive in telling Sacramento, these are the unintended consequences of their legislation and fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to item eleven in new business and we have an introduction of age-friendly city initiative. And I have the honor of introducing Anne O'Brien Keagren. Thank you, Anne. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to try to share my screen here.
I like the Irish background.
Okay, do you see my?
Yes, we do.
Okay. There we go. All right. And you can hear me okay?
Perfect.
Great. So good evening, uh, Mayor Oliva, Vice Mayor Pappin, council members and City Manager Williams. My name is Anne O'Brien and I work for the Center for Age Friendly Excellence. I actually have a different hat on, um, this evening. I think most of you know me as a council member, uh, from the city of Burlingame. So it definitely feels a little different on the other side of the dais, but it's good to see you all. Um, so our goal, um, for age-friendly excellence is to advance your understanding of age-friendly cities and communities. And we hope to create a transformational change in creating healthy, active, sustainable and engaged intergenerational communities. Our organizations worked with San Mateo County for the last three years and we fortunately received a grant late last year, uh, to work with eight cities over the next sixteen months. And so, uh, Millbury is one of those cities. Running to go to the next slide. There we go. Okay. So the goal, um, of the World Health Organization is to advance vibrant, healthy, inclusive communities for all and to tap the potential that older people represent for humanity. And the World Health Organization was the organization that actually originally certified cities. Uh, but with everything going on globally, they have taken a backseat and now we are working with the AARP. The Age Friendly Network was founded in two thousand and five and we now have over eleven hundred cities, uh, worldwide uh, that are certified. And, uh, just in the last two months, we've actually certified, um, the city of San Carlos, also, um, Half Moon Bay. And so over the next five to six months, we're going to be working with Millbury, Belmont and San Bruno. A ten thousand, uh, United States adults turn sixty-five daily and this will continue until about twenty thirty. By twenty fifty, at least twenty-two percent of the world's humans will be older persons and most live within cities. By twenty thirty, about ten point eight million Californians will be age sixty or over. And this means actually that the older adults will make up about one quarter of the state's population. And then this growth rate is actually larger than any other age group. So when working, um, to get certified, we actually have to, uh, look at eight domains of livability. And so this is used by cities, counties, states and countries in order to organize and prioritize their work and create an environment that is most livable for both older residents and actually people of all ages. These are all evidence-based and while some communities tackle all eight domains at once, most choose to focus on a couple domains or combine a few domains together. And that's what, um, Cafe Center for Age Friendly Excellence really helps the cities with. So in starting out with the first domain, outdoor spaces and buildings, you can address the needs for people to have public spaces either inside or outside, have safe streets and sidewalks and have accessible buildings. In regards to transportation, this may include affordable and accessible transit, walkable cities, convenient transit, safe sidewalks for walking and biking and also plenty of lighting. In regards to housing, which I think all peninsula cities, um, most peninsula cities are really working on, is providing the affordable and available housing for all income levels. Um, and also encouraging people to be able to age in their own homes. Under social participation, uh, social isolation and loneliness contributes toward mental and physical illness. And we've really seen a lot of that in the last couple of years due to the COVID pandemic where older adults were really restricted in their homes. Um, it's important to have social activities and recreational resources available and also to provide cultural and intergenerational opportunities. Regarding to respect and social inclusion, we really need to value the people we are with. It was quite interesting that the World Health Organization conducted an analysis which showed that negative or ageist attitudes toward older people are quite widespread. Sixty percent of the respondents to the World Value Survey analyzed by the World Health Organization reports that older people are not respected and this, of course, is not acceptable. The lowest level of respect, interestingly enough, was reported in high-income countries. Energy, energy, intergenerational activities, uh, are a way to learn, uh, from each other. So for example, uh, you may have the teaching of older adults, adults how to use their, um, tech devices by, uh, kids. And then in return, you may have your older adults teaching kids to read or giving them history lessons. Um, under civic participation and employment, this provides opportunities for older people to volunteer, work and expand their knowledge skills. This also helps people get, um, more out of their community. Communication and information, um, information needs to be disseminated through a variety of avenues. Communication, of course, is a two-way street and we really need to listen carefully and respectfully. And under community support and health services, we definitely want to see affordable, uh, medical care, uh, convenient medical care, health promotion and disease prevention, follow-through and follow-up with, um, medical care, enhance awareness of available support services and also identify gaps in services and partner with community organizations and nonprofits to actually fill those gaps. I know, um, the city of Millbury is doing a really good job addressing older adult, um, issues. And, you know, you've created a new, uh, recreation center that you'll be opening up soon. It has senior programs and activities. Um, you have your senior wellness checks, very successful senior lunches and of course, day-to-day public work projects, uh, whether that's, you know, streets, um, upgrades in your sidewalks and, um, park improvements. So there's a process we go through, um, Cafe in regards to helping cities get certified. And so we have, um, developed a county-wide core team which meets on a monthly basis. So this group consists of someone from, uh, Aging and Adult Services from San Mateo County. Um, also, um, Peninsula Family Services, uh, Senior Villages and the Cafe Team, uh, just to name a few. We then organize an age-friendly task force for each city. Um, and when we work with the task force, we work with them to recruit and develop a diverse and inclusive list of community members to be part of the focus groups. We provide quantitative data, uh, that San Mateo County, um, puts together and we'll give that to the task force. And then we will conduct about four to five focus groups and have conversations with them that focus on unmet needs in Millbury, the strengths in your city and then also potential solutions and projects. Uh, and we hope then to derive, um, three to four inaugural projects to submit to the AARP. And so once those projects are identified by the task force from an extensive list, uh, from the focus groups, then the mayor then signs a cover letter and the application is then submitted to the AARP. And we usually hear back from the ARP, uh, within a month, um, to see whether or not, um, the city's been certified. So some examples of some really good projects that we've, um, developed over the last three years. Um, Daily City, under the Communications Information Domain, they have actually focused on the digital divide and created a laptop, uh, lending program with training and free community wifi for an entire neighborhood. They also addressed isolation issues. They developed a resource line, a telehealth checks, partnerships with nursing students. They established a pen pal, um, program, a grab and go meals with delivery for homebound seniors. And now they're working on a, um, tax support, uh, since it is tax season. Uh, Burlingame has, uh, worked, uh, in developing a simplicity app which provides one-way communication to inform older adults about various things in the city. So, uh, people can sign up for whatever topics they are interested in. So say, for example, crime and safety, uh, library programs, rep programs, uh, commission, uh, meetings. They will get one, uh, way push notification. So then they don't have to worry about like when they go to Nextdoor trying to find, um, information and then they have to deal with all the comments, uh, with Nextdoor. This is very simple and one-way communication. Makes it a lot easier. Um, Pacifica is providing workshops on a quarterly basis to assist older adults in applying for subsidized housing. Uh, in addition to providing education about ADUs and how they can support aging in place and multi-generational housing arrangements. They've also created a connect-a-ride program, which is very similar to the Got Wheels program that, um, Peninsula Family Services helped Daily City, uh, in granting some money. And then San Mateo County helps give money to that program. And that, um, Got Wheels program is, um, actually has been established in multiple cities in the peninsula. San Carlos actually just recently developed a very interesting program. Um, they developed a medical equipment loan program by making available recycled medical equipment, um, that is safe and available at no cost to, um, local residents. And they've also started a public access show, uh, started by the Senior Villages of San Mateo County called Age Friendly Bay Area. And then Redwood City, um, development, developed an Appy Hour, so APPY, um, where older, um, adults meet with teenagers that are in high school and they help them with their electronic devices. And they have developed some pop-up nightclubs and game nights for, um, older adults. So this is, um, basically a five-year commitment. And, um, then once the five years is up, then there's a continual evaluation on a yearly basis. You do have to develop, um, an action plan within two years of your certification. And so you want to keep this document active rather than a static document that just sits on a shelf. Uh, revisions and amendments are assigned in program improvement and progress. And basically this plan is based on the results of community surveys identifying needs within the eight domains of livability that influence the health and the quality of life of older adults. And you can go to the AARP website and actually see a bunch of sample action plans throughout the state of California. And this is something that staff can work on. Staff can work with maybe a subcommittee of your task force or develop a separate age-friendly subcommittee or, um, hire a consultant like Cafe to help, um, with that age-friendly, um, action plan. Whatever suits your city the best. There are many benefits of having age-friendly cities. Um, it definitely contributes to economic, social, cultural life in the community. It also helps businesses thrive, whether as a consumer, um, a volunteer and/or employee or employer. Uh, analysis shows that older people as a group contribute significantly to its regional GDP and regional personal income indicators, especially when compared to other age groups. And as a group, their personal income and discretionary spending far exceed the personal income and spending of any other cohort. And there is an article, um, The Longevity Econ, uh, Economy, How People Over Fifty Are Driving the Economic and Social Value in the United States. And this is by the, um, Oxford Economics Study Done in Two Thousand and Sixteen. So Cafe would like to receive support from all of you so we can move forward to complete the development of a task force and then get recommendations for focus groups which are diverse, inclusive in, uh, ethnicity, thought and culture. And then once Cafe has completed the process, your, um, cities and community support and leadership is really needed to move forward. Age-friendly city is inclusive and accessible urban rural environment that promotes active aging. And, um, on the slide is Cafe's, uh, website and their mission is to advance transformational change to a create a vibrant, sustainable, sustainable, supportive and inclusive communities for all generations. And basically what we want to do is really increase the awareness of the needs of older adults. So when you're making policies or developing projects, that you really look at things through an older adult lens. And Governor Newsom has recently put together with, um, a team, a master plan for aging. And actually, one of those categories, uh, integrates the importance of having all cities in California become age-friendly. And so it's really a good way to, um, increase the kind of, or, or make more aware the mentality of how important it is to look at your cities and make sure policy really integrates the older adult needs. And so that's what Cafe is trying to do, um, with the county of San Mateo and try to get all cities, um, certified. Um, Cafe has worked with Santa Clara County and has all their cities certified. And so that is the ultimate goal, uh, for San Mateo County also. So that's the end of my presentation and if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Council, do we have any comments, questions? I can't see my council. Let me see. Councilmember Schneider.
Um, thank you, Ms. Keagren. Um, I fully support this. I think this is great. I would attend Supervisor Canepa's, um, senior programs on this. So I'm glad to see that it's come to us. Um, Anne, you and I serve on emergency services council. So I know we've talked about getting our seniors out in, in times of evacuation. Will this eventually lead to a better plan on making sure that seniors who no longer drive or have mobility issues, we can take care of them?
That is something that will be up to your, um, task force and focus groups. And if that rises as a priority, then it'll be up to your task force to see if that is doable. Um, it is important to remember that this is an action plan. So you want to put together short-term goals, medium goals, long-term goals. Um, I know emergency services that is an issue with some of the cities, uh, when I've had discussions with them. So, um, that really ultimately is up to your city. Cafe is not here to tell you what to do. Cafe is here to foster those conversations because who knows better what your city needs? It's, it's you and your constituents. And so that's what we're trying to do is just kind of get those plans started. And the other thing is, you know, with these action plans, you know, it may take five years, you know, to implement the multiple projects that you come up with. And then every year you're going to do an evaluation. So you're going to figure out your target dates and your progress. So this is a, a, a document that is basically always changing. And so what you're doing now is going to be maybe different what you're doing five years from now versus ten years, twenty years, et cetera. So, um, but I, I do agree, you know, emergency services is, um, something that is important to many of the cities and it will be up to your city on how you want to approach that.
The only other thing I would throw out there, it's nice that you've talked about San Carlos because we're similar in that we, we both have really hilly canyon areas which provide additional issues with no shuttle buses serving our customers up there. So very good. Thank you for this.
Welcome.
So Anne, uh, from, from your presentation tonight, of, I would imagine that we would all like to be part of this. What's, what's the way the city's, uh, structured? What's the next step? Do we create a subcommittee?
Right. So, um, actually, you know, I, um, have had conversations with, uh, Mayor Oliva. And so there will be, um, Mayor Oliva and I've talked to Vice Mayor, um, Pappin. You will be part of the task force. I've also had the pleasure, um, talking with, um, Mackenzie Brady. Uh, and she has given me, uh, And she has given me a few recommendations to include people, various people on the task force. I do have confirmation from Cheryl Lama from Peninsula Hospital. I figured since she was on the border of Millbrae and Burlingame, she's been involved with Burlingame, has great ideas and also lives in Millbrae. So I think she will be an asset to the task force. I have someone from your senior advisory committee, also your Millbrae Lions Club. And then I'm waiting back from someone from Rotary and your library. So I'm trying to get.
Get ahold of Maggie Mu?
Yes, she's been confirmed. I don't have the list in front of me and I don't particularly want to go try to find the list right now, but what I can do though is send it to you, send it to the mayor probably next week.
So, so based on tonight with your presentation, if we approve this, then we take that next step to.
Correct. So the next step is to kind of get the task force confirmed. And then what I will do then is we will set up a virtual meeting, hopefully in the next couple of weeks and have our first task force meeting where I kind of go over this presentation for people who haven't seen it. And then kind of go over what is expected of the task force members. And then over the next couple of months, then be able to put together some four to five focus groups, gather all that information, we'll put reports together, send it then to the task force group and then narrow down the projects. Because you know, like for example, Burlingame came up with like 30 different projects. So we narrowed it down to four. And it can be projects that already you're already utilizing, you know, you don't want exactly want to reinvent the wheel for everything. But it's, I will say it's been amazing, the projects that various cities have come up with.
Cool.
And then once the task force kind of narrows that down, then we'll kind of develop a subcommittee from that task force and then put the application together. And then Mayor Leva, you will have a cover letter and then we'll send it to the AARP. So my goal is to try to get this all done by the month of August.
On your mark, get set. Vice Mayor Gina Pappin.
Thank you. Councilmember Krieger, thank you for being here. This is awesome. And I think we have really good starting points. I don't think, you know, I think we can do it well before five years here. We've got self-help for the elderly. We've got a bunch of recreation programs geared towards our seniors, library programs. So I think we're off to a great start. I really love the recycling of medical equipment. I think that's great. And one of our residents tonight, Ron, mentioned if we have some dangerous streets that we need to make safer, that would be helpful, I'm sure, to our senior population.
In addition, St. Carlos actually did an inventory of their sidewalks and streets. So at least in Public Works kind of created a master plan and then decided from there, you know, their like short-term, medium-term and long-term goals with that.
That's great. And then too, can we, we have a very active cert community. May seniors involved in some of that to help with other seniors, I think would be great. And we also mentioned too, I think many of us have seen some of our senior neighbors out there getting exercise sometimes with their walkers or however, they're making it around the block, but we discussed this, it might be helpful to actually put the name of streets in the middle of a street. Because sometimes you get a little disoriented and not sure where you are. So things like new ideas coming out from the public, if anybody has them and wants to contribute here. We are all know somebody or friends, family who are more mature, shall we say, that may need a little bit more help. So I think all kinds of wonderful ideas lie ahead and very excited that Millbrae is a part of this process and these services. I think it could be wonderful for our entire community. So thank you very much for bringing this to us, letting us be a part of this. And whenever we get around to it, I'll be part of the motion. So thank you.
Very good. It will be a pleasure working with you all. And I know you had mentioned some parks. So in doing some research, there are many countries that actually have multi-generational parks. And so that'll be something I can bring up to the task force and give you some information on. But we've also actually, I'm going to be talking to some members in Germany on a few things that they are working on. So we're trying to think outside the box and bring things that have been really successful in other areas.
That's great. Just as a final note too, we have various taxi cab services that we contract with within our city. And I know in the past, we've had discounted rides for seniors. I think some of the companies are still doing that. Some of them have wheelchair access. They're really picking up where public services have lacked. So I would really like to see that integrating that part again and bringing that back to our community. So thank you.
I do think, yeah, I do think actually Millbrae is involved in the Got Wheels program. I can double check that for you, but it is for seniors 70 and over. And they get a discounted rate each month.
Yeah, in the past, I don't think we've even announced it out again.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there, thank you, Vice Mayor. There's also another program that we didn't realize that we are part of. And I think that our city manager, Tom, do we have that? Did we confirm that we do have that discounted? Is Tom there?
I'm here, Mayor. Before I answer the question, I I mean, I was gonna make a, I don't, I, yeah, go ahead and ask the question. I don't know for sure.
No, okay, then let's hold it for, till we know the facts. We'll wait for that.
Yeah, just we can talk and let me know. Then I can provide that information to the city council.
Perfect.
Well, I have the microphone. I know I might be out of place here, but Anne, thank you for bringing this and including Millbrae on this list of the city. So much appreciated.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Anne, very, very much. So.
You're welcome.
Mayor? I think Gina made a motion. Yes.
Actually, Mayor, comment?
Yes, of course.
In this month's senior newsletter, it does talk about the 65 and older, you get six rides within SFO and the cities. And it gave a range of cities because I just cut it out to try to set my mom up so she can get to the hospital if I'm not here. So yeah, we do have that program and it was in senior line. Since you've already chosen a council subcommittee of you and Gina, it sounds like, can I suggest that we get somebody from our bike pedestrian committee? Because I have a 94-year-old at home and I can't send her out walking on herself because the sidewalks are uneven and she will fall. And I won't be there. So I have to walk with her and many of our sidewalks are in that condition. So I mean, there, I'm going to be 65 in September. I don't quite feel old. Sometimes I feel old. But you know, there's a big difference when you hit the 80s and the 90s of what you can do. And our bike pedestrian committee should be looking at the condition of sidewalks, what street trees do to sidewalks, et cetera. So I'd love to see you get somebody from our B-PAC there on your committee.
Okay. Thank you. Great comment. Do we? I'm sorry. Councilmember Fun, or is that Mike? Sorry, I got everybody's. Can we take this slide so we can see it better?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. Just want to make a quick comment here. I think the youth advisory committee are still organizing the trivia events with the senior advisory committee. So that should be part of that process. I know the self-help for the elderly and some of the youth leaders are organizing some workshop for the youth to help, you know, some of the Asian-speaking, Chinese-speaking seniors, how to use Zoom and how to get on social media for the first time and how to use FaceTime, you know, to see their grandchildren who might be, you know, a little bit further away. So those are some of the programs that I think could potentially be very beneficial to our seniors as well. So thank you, Anne, for bringing this to our city. You know, we have a, obviously a growing population of seniors. So we're all grown, right? So it's absolutely critical that we do everything we can to help those who have given us so much, you know. And, you know, I think this is an important initiative. I'll be happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak? I don't see any hands raised. Mr. Conrad, are you raising your hand?
I was. Just a quick comment. It'd be better practice to limit your ad hoc committee to the actual members of the city council. But certainly a good idea to consult with members from other city bodies. But I think the law requires that the ad hoc committee technically just be council members.
So we'll label it that way, please. Okay, fair enough. So we had a motion from Vice Mayor. Councilmember Schneider, did you second that? I didn't.
I'm happy to second it.
Thank you. Can we call for a vote, please?
Madam Mayor.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Fun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappin.
Aye.
Mayor Leva.
Aye.
The city council approves by motion moving forward with the Center of Age Friendly Excellence Assistant to apply for the Age Friendly Communities Certification under the AARP/WHO Network of Age Friendly Communities by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, city clerk. Well, we made it through the agenda. It is 9:22. So us, like the public, will limit our comments for council comments to three minutes. Is there anybody that would like to raise their hand to go first? Then I will call on Councilmember Fun. Three minutes, please.
I want to be short and sweet here. So Peninsula Clean Energy adopted a new resolutions to implement, you know, new PC Eco Plus rates effective April this year to reflect in that 5% discount. So it's a good thing. And I think we're so proud to continue to offer competitive rates and clean renewable energy to all of San Mateo county residents and businesses. You know, as I said a little earlier, the youth advisors are working on the trivia event with the senior advisory committee. And then they're also continuing their discussions with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office for their Q and A task. And it's nice to see our youth leaders continue to engage in the public safety agencies to bring awareness. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holliver.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, I attended the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting last week. There was a couple of updates on ongoing projects. One is the Fitness Court and Skate Park. Okay, that was on our council agenda a couple of meetings ago, and that is project as well underway if you're ever in that area. With the new lawn and plantings around the Fitness Court and also the Central Park Playground, which is been by Central Park lately. That has come up quickly and looks like it should probably be done in the next, probably the next couple of weeks, I would think. Certainly before the opening of the rec center. So very exciting and good to see this project's been brought. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schneider.
I attended the San Mateo County Department of Education Safe Routes to School. Millbrae is finally eligible now to apply for grants that come from CCG that come from block grants. And they will be looking for grant funding for walk audits. I would like to see the city reengage with the school district so that we can work in partnership on getting these walking grants done. It's also found out that staff at that level are working with Lamita Park and Green Hill School on bike ped issues. And it would be nice to loop them into our own bike pedestrian committee. They also just completed a collision study countywide that shows which roads are the most dangerous for children in every city. And they do have a map of Millbrae. I'm having it sent. CCG B-PAC requested, or CCG staff requested a meeting with myself as vice chair and Malcolm Robinson of San Bruno, the chair of B-PAC, to talk about a federal funding program. This is $37 million covering fiscal year 22, 23 to fiscal year 25, 26. So it's four years, $37 million in competitive grants with a very short timeline. The grant submittal or submission, the grant will be released in May. Applications are due in July. There will be no site visits. CCG B-PAC will score and make our recommendations in August and it'll go to the CCG board in September. It's going to be very competitive and they are telling us we may get 50 grant applications on this or more. So it's basically August homework. This Thursday, B-PAC, CCG B-PAC will meet. We will be voting on the TDP Article 3 grants, of which Millbrae did not make the cut. We are just below the cut. I will tell you that myself and Malcolm from San Bruno tried very hard to get CCG to recognize the history of who gets CCG B-PAC grants. Because there is one city that has gotten a grant every time they applied. And instead, the way the scoring form came out is they lumped the history of receiving grants in a 10-year cycle. So Millbrae received one in the last 10 years. Pacifica received one in the last 10 years. South San Francisco received at least six and all of us got zero points. South San Francisco received $3.59 million from the state last summer and another 2.49 from CCG staff. And they are again the highest scorer getter on yet another grant. South San Francisco getting the lion's share of bike pedestrian money in this county. If you cannot tell, I'm mad as hell. I am mad as hell that our intent was to try to move the grants around to all of the cities, which are all based on per capita money raised from our residents and it's going to a select group. But it will come to CCG next week. And you know, in some cases, I'm glad Pacifica will finally get its first grant in eight years, but South San Francisco will get another. I think that we need an agenda item for council that looks at block grants. Block grants are federal funding that comes from the feds to the state, to MTC in some cases and other cases, and then from MTC to CCG in other cases to the county Board of Housing. And how the community development funds are being used, the surface transportation funds and the emergency recovery block grants. I believe that small cities and the unpolitically strong, possibly due to term limits, we're getting, pardon my French, we're not getting the money. And certain cities are getting the money. And if you, Millbrae, if you want to know why we have the second worst roads, second only to Pacifica, it's the way the county is giving out money and making little cities compete against each other when the big cities get their own money directly given to them and then can use it for 100% match like South San Francisco did. It's just, it's, it's just wrong.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pappin. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I feel my colleagues' pain here in that we have 20 cities and we are always constantly up against the big three mayors in the Bay Area as far as funding goes. Is some funding coming up available tomorrow at MTC, some of the 100 billion federal discretionary grant funds? And the county has been trying for once to really get a collaborative effort on a few of the projects. One of the major projects is of course, the electrification of Caltrain. Another project which is, and these are projects that are like within five years of completion. So that was the focus here. The Broadway grade separation in Burlingame. South City approached the TA. We all need to work on our strategies here. South City's grade separation and also the 92-101 interchange, which is really out of date. So these projects, that one in particular, the EIR is already done. And I've really, I'm learning a lot here in that we, as a city, all of our cities do not sell themselves like the other cities do. We really need to up our game in how we present to the region and trying to work with cities like our own for just that. We have, we received a grant from MTC regarding our station area and I'm hoping to meet with staff so that we can strategically leverage that into something else. I missed the meeting last week, not staff's fault. My apologies, but hopefully we can reschedule that one. But lots of exciting things happening on the Bay or on our corridor here. But lots of exciting things happening on the Bay Area, on our corridor here. The one oh one managed lanes are moving ahead, and we have a lot of work to do. But again, it's always a struggle getting San Mateo County on the map. We are the economic engine of the entire region, and yet we still have to fight for funding which we should be getting here. So I look forward to working with all my colleagues. I'd like to say the St. Patrick's Day Celebration at Fiddler's Green was a lot of fun. Got to meet our new HR Director, Ms. Carlos there. Hi, nice to see you again. And I hope that the council, as we move forward here, has a policy that the Planning Commission is not allowed to touch monuments within the city without that going to the city council first. The, one of the new developments is going to take out the other entry monument to this city. So right now, we don't have, we won't have any except the one that we negotiated with the developer on the BART side. And we still haven't reached agreement on that one. So let's just hope that we get some sort of a policy there, and I know staff's working overtime on a lot of things. So thank you very, very much, everyone, and have a good, safe evening. Thank you.
Thank you. So, team, I'm going to end on a positive note here. We were not chosen by the county to be one of the five cities to get the grant for two hundred and fifty for the homeless issues that were going on in our county. And we stepped up to the plate and we said, we're going to do it ourselves. And our supervisor, Dave Pine, said, you know what, I might be able to find some money for you, Millbrae. And he did. He came forward and he gave it to us. And I want to share a little letter that I got privy to from our city manager that went out to the outstanding work of the Life Moves team here in Millbrae with our measure came on these from our supervisor, David Pine. He writes, hi Isabel, just a quick note to recognize and commend the great staff at Life Moves for their outstanding work and progress here in the city of Millbrae. The success realized through the efforts and the professional work of the team in just a few short months has been incredible. So much that both San Mateo County and BART stated that they have never seen the level of success, not even close that achieved, that was achieved by Life Moves. Under your leadership and the work of Barbara Flores, Jesse Garcia, Mitchell Ferriera and Roxanne Stone, I understand that Life Moves has successfully placed, you guys ready? Successfully placed sixty-five people in shelters encountered at the Millbrae BART station and are successfully assisting dozens more. There are truly not enough words I can write to convey the heroic efforts of all of you and the gratitude I have for you. As I mentioned to you on the phone, the city of Millbrae has realized some great successes recently. But the greatest and the best thing to happen to our city is partnering with Life Moves. Please pass this along with my gratitude, and we are here for anything you may need. Here's to a long and continued partnership. Guys, this is something that we should all congratulate ourselves. Thank you, Life Moves. Thank you, Dave Pine. Thank you, Manager Williams. And thank you, Councilmember Schneider, Councilmember Fun, Councilman Holliver, Vice Mayor Pappin. We have numbers to show that we did something very good for sixty-five people. Thank you all. And with that, I think we should adjourn. All good? Have a great night, guys.